Meeting of April 16th to order, and if you would, please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers, here. Bowman, here. Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Folkins.
Here. At this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor, members of the city council, I would like the council to please amend the agenda to add the Oasis recognition of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month under Communications accordingly.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended and to add the request from Oasis as item six dash E under Communications.
Support. Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you say your first name and provide your name and address for the clerk on the paper, that would be greatly appreciated. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda this evening, we have the minutes from the work session that was held on April 2nd, as well as the meeting minutes from our regular meeting on April 7th, 2nd, I apologize.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. All right, this evening, we have a couple of public hearings, so I'll turn it to you, Marcus.
Okay, thank you very much. I am actually going to be turning these public hearings over to our Finance Director, Owen Roberts accordingly. The first one is regarding the proposed 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program.
Okay, thank you. We're here tonight to talk about the, as Marcus said, the six-year capital improvement program. Just wanted to point out, since its inception, this has been a five-year capital improvement program as part of our redevelopment readiness community process that we're going through. One of the things that they're requiring is a six-year capital improvement plan, and so we quickly complied with that. And so what you're seeing from tonight, moving forward into the future, it'll be at least, at least, a six-year program. So now, what you formerly knew as a five-year capital improvement program is a six-year plan. Just very quickly, I was told that someone in here could do this in three minutes, and so I'm on the clock trying to compete against that. There it goes.
I'd like to know who that is.
He's sitting behind your desk. So, yes, yes, yes. So, very quickly, the purpose of this program, this is not a required process for the city as an organization, it's not in the charter, it's not in any of our ordinances, however, it's something that we've been doing for a long, long time. We do it essentially for planning and scheduling and coordination. We identify these projects, so when we present something to council for your approval, it won't be the first time typically that you've seen this project. You've had a chance to talk about these things, to have some discussion, and you've seen these things coming. Now, certainly, there's things that can be added along the way that aren't a part of this. It also is just a valuable tool, as we look at street projects, which is what a large portion of this document consists of. It helps us then to coordinate the infrastructure underneath the street with what you see on the top of the street. Interestingly, kind of like the redevelopment-ready community process, more and more, this is kind of becoming quite the norm in communities, especially communities our size and larger, to have a document like this, and in fact, even kind of a required checkbox to qualify for certain grants and other things that we're going after. So this very much is a standard, but we've kind of been ahead of the curve for a long time. We define a capital project for the purposes of this document as a physical asset or a major piece of software that costs more than $7,500. The only magic in that number is that's the council's spending threshold, so it's projects that you would have to approve as a council. And then with a useful life of greater than one year. So the types of projects that you'll see in a municipality, street projects, water and sewer, pipes, equipment, infrastructure, building projects, projects here at the municipal complex, and any other kinds of special projects, vehicles, service trucks, fire apparatus, police cars, and other heavy equipment that you see coming before you regularly, like plow trucks, front-end loaders, et cetera. All of these projects are simply proposed by this program, which we ask council to approve the program. That doesn't necessarily give final approval to the projects nor appropriate the funds at this time. That's what we get to do next. A high-level overview of this program, it proposes $16 million worth of projects. There are 176 total projects in the plan, broken down here, as you can see. Street and utilities infrastructure constitutes over half of the dollars that are a part of these projects. Those are our higher-dollar projects that we do as part of the document. But there are 176 projects, all of which are individually described with a dedicated page in the document. Here's a direct link to the document if anyone is interested, or we're always happy to provide hard copies by request. So this has been on our website as we prepared for this public hearing for a few weeks, really, since we had the work session in March. The street and utilities infrastructure, as I said, constitute $8.7 million of the six-year total, actually. We've mostly updated to a six-year program. Fifty-four percent of the costs of the program are contained within this type of project. The total plan over the six years proposes 30 street projects, and this will reconstruct or rehabilitate five miles of city streets. This obviously isn't all the projects, it's just the ones for year one that we'll be considering as part of the budget process tonight, and you can read the list there. Just about $1.3 million between the street costs and the utilities infrastructure underneath. Quickly, I'll just highlight a few of the projects that we do. You've seen these for a number of years. Police patrol vehicles, we replace one of those each year as budget funds allow. This allows us to keep a very updated fleet, especially in the front line, police patrol vehicles. There's obvious safety concerns when you do that. By the time we replace these, they have well over 100,000 miles on them. We do keep them around a couple of years, just to replace then the two or three vehicles that we have for school and training-type travel for our officers. Plow trucks, this is something that we weren't able to do for a number of years, as we were really addressing some significant budgetary challenges. Now, though, in years one through three, we're going to replace plow truck number three, four, and five. So of our active plow truck fleet, which is five, all of them then will be five years old or less, which is a really, really good thing. The fire department has a project for self-contained breathing apparatus. This is what they wear to help them breathe when they're entering a smoky building. The cost of this is $128,000. We do have an assistance-to-firefighters grant application pending. That's a grant that we were rejected on last year for this same equipment. We did apply for it again. The difference this year is if we don't get the grant, we still need to replace this equipment. It's to a point at this stage where it can't be recertified from a safety perspective, and so if we don't get this grant, we're essentially going to have to come up with about $120,000 to replace this. So this is, this really is frontline-safety-type equipment for our firefighters as they enter these buildings. And so hopefully, we'll get the grant. If not, we'll be back in front of you for a proposal on how to fund it. The trailhead at Cadillac Commons is one that a lot of people are excited about. This really will complete the planned projects for the Cadillac Commons area. Estimated costs at this point, there is a rendering on the slide, estimated cost is about $375,000. The Rotary Club is committed to this project. We do have a grant that's already been awarded, at least we're mostly sure that it's been awarded.
Still waiting for the letter.
Still waiting, really, for the letter, which has been a long time in coming, but we have received our preliminary approval on that. And then we'll need to find some other funds to fund the final bit of those costs. And again, these are estimated costs at this point. Talked a little bit about this in our work session with the wireless connectivity project. This really will piggyback on some new fiber connectivity and opportunity that we have to partner with the county, with merit networks on this. This really will streamline, enhance, protect the integrity of the data here at the city as we connect all of our ancillary buildings together through wireless technology. Helps make sure we're backing up data at all our facilities, gives us some off-site backup capabilities, and just a lot of good things for our technology and our network. Our playground equipment throughout the city is starting to get dated and suffer from some safety concerns, so we're just going to start building some money as we can into our budget to replace those things. This really is not as cheap as you would think it would be. We had a section get destroyed by a tree a year or two ago, not a big section, and it was over $5,000 to replace. So now, the thing that we don't want, obviously, jagged edges, rusty edges of metal sticking out when the kids are playing on this. So we just wanted to start to get ahead of this a little bit, to keep those playgrounds fun, usable, and safe. We need to replace our street sweeper. This is another project that's been delayed for several years. Our other sweeper has continued to operate, but right now, it's, one of them is down, and so we need to start thinking about and planning for a replacement of this. It is actually in year one, it is a part of the budget that you'll hear about next. These things also are not cheap, $200,000 is about the cost to replace one of these. We're going a little bit different direction with a mechanical-type sweeper this time, instead of one that has a vacuum. The mechanical parts are supposed to be a little more stable and experience less maintenance and repair concerns. So that's a project that will be coming back in front of council once the budget is adopted. There's been some movement and some talk related to the industrial park, the James Potvin section, the newer section, and so we need to start thinking about and planning for, again, the expansion, the phase-two expansion of that. This project was originally developed 15 to 16 years ago, I think, maybe a little bit less, mostly grant-funded, and so we're at the point now where we need to start considering the phase-two expansion of that. We'll be seeking grants, again, for that. We do have some money in our industrial park fund also to help offset some of those costs, and if we are successful in getting a grant to help provide the matching funds for that. Just some other projects, and you can read through this list, you've seen these before. Some shoreline stabilization, that's always important, especially as you see the damage that the ice does each spring. Service trucks, computer replacement, we want to keep those operating efficiently. Other IT infrastructure, well-field testing and manhole rehabilitation, these are projects we've been doing for a few years, just to help lengthen the useful life of our, some of our utilities infrastructure. And then, six riding mowers across our operations, water and sewer, DPW, cemetery, and parks. Those were the projects I wanted to quickly highlight for you, the council. As far as the next steps go, this really is kind of the culmination for this document. We did have a work session, it's been available to the public on our website and in the office for a month or so. We did conduct this public hearing tonight. Council, again, basically approves this program, there's no real formal adoption or anything, it's just kind of an approval of the program and the, at least conceptually, the projects that are in it. Year one of the program really was plugged into the annual operating budget as funds were available, and then that's then where the funding is specifically addressed, and then, once we bid the projects out, then the actual approval of the project. So there still is a couple more steps for all these projects to actually be undertaken. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Owen. At this time, we'll open the public comment for this public hearing, having to do with the capital improvement program. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to council discussion or requests for motion. We've had a lot of discussion on this, and thank you, Owen, and staff for putting this together. It's good to know where you're headed, so that you can make good decisions where we are. So I'll make a motion to approve the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program as presented.
Support. Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Owen is going to get himself ready and then conduct the second public hearing this evening. Just as a side note, there is no action for city council to take tonight, as Owen will explain, he'll take that action later.
Okay, thank you. I think that last one was about six minutes. This one may take a fraction longer, but I'm going to try and not waste anybody's time and just really tell you what I think you need to hear related to the adoption of our annual budget.
It wasn't six minutes.
It wasn't six.
But no one's counting.
At 6:15, I thought, I can round down to six, and nobody will even notice. Okay, I'll try.
You're good, Owen, you're doing great.
It's so good, though, nobody cares that you went over, bud.
This is very informative.
I know, yeah. I get it, I get it, so anyways.
There are those who take much longer for presentations, just saying.
Yeah.
Who, who is that?
Anyway, so this, again, I believe most of you know it, we do have a couple of newer council members. This is very much a charter-required process that we're undergoing here tonight. Section 10.2, section 10 of the charter really addresses a lot of the finance and budgetary requirements. Section 10.2 says that honor before the first day in April each year, the proposed budget will be ready, is kind of all it says. So we take that to mean Marcus and I will have finalized it here, we'll have the document put together, and we'll have it delivered to council by April 1st. So we did meet that deadline, that was spring break week. Section 10.3 says that a public hearing on the proposed budget shall be held before its final adoption in the second half of the month of April, as the city council shall direct. So this is the second half of the month of April, and so we are meeting that requirement as well. There's some specific language we have to put in the public hearing notice that has to be published in the paper, at least 10 days before that public hearing. We did comply with that as well. Basically, the language of that, not from the charter, but from the General Property Tax Act, says we have to indicate that the millage rate to be levied will be a part of this public hearing. So that'll be on a slide here in a little bit. Section 10.4 then addresses the adoption or approval of the budget, says not before the 10th day of May, nor later than the last day in May. In each year, the city council shall by ordinance adopt a budget for the next fiscal year. So you will see the introduction of that ordinance towards the end of the meeting tonight, so that we can then schedule that public hearing for the adoption of the budget by ordinance on May 21st. Overall, the budget this year looks like this, essentially, total revenue of $19.4 million, with spending of $18.6 million. So we are at a surplus for this year, primarily that's because we're going to propose the issuance of a small bond issue, one and a half to $2 million, that will be covered by our street funds, the Motor Vehicle Highway Funds Act, $51, no tax dollars to support that, but we'll be looking to pledge that money, and that's why there's a surplus, is we'll receive, you receive those all in one lump sum, one and a half million or 2 million, whatever we end up with. I think that the budget has one and a half million, and then we'll spend those down over the course of a couple of years. So that surplus will kind of go away in time. The fiscal year 2018 amended numbers are presented, just as a reference, we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go here, but wanted to show you the overall summary. Street construction, just because that's one of the primary points of interest in our budget each year, $1.6 million last year, as we did two miles of streets and spent down the final proceeds from our last bond issue. This year, we're at about $785,000. Other highlights, general fund, no proposed use of reserves on hand to balance this year's budget, that's good news. No change in property tax rates, and maybe one of the most important things that I think I can assure you, as the Finance Directors, we talk about the budget, this does protect our policy in recommended fund balances and reserves, even in accordance or in excess of some best-practice recommendations, so we're in a good financial place. General fund, our policy is 15%. Water and sewer fund, best practice is three to six months of operations and cash on hand. And again, we do exceed both of those benchmarks at this point. And then, no change in full-time employment for the year. Digging down into that a little bit deeper, revenue by type, just so you can get a feel for what our primary sources of revenue here are here at the city. Taxes provide just over 20% of our total budget. There is a little bit of duplication in that, but some of that is our main levy in the general fund, and then we have some special millages, and then we also collect some captures in some of our tax increment financing funds as well. Interest income, this is on a positive trend at last, as interest rates go up a little bit. It's not good if you're looking to buy a house, but for us, in investing our money in what we're allowed to invest it in, it's going up, albeit a little bit slow. Intergovernmental revenues, these are primarily from the state of Michigan, and charges for services primarily are water and sewer user charges. Local funds essentially are some transfers in internal operations, and then other includes some bond revenues and other miscellaneous items. We'll touch on each of those a little bit deeper. Tax base, I think anytime you collect a tax is one of your primary revenue sources, and the schools can certainly attest to this, you have to talk about your tax base, because that's what your revenue obviously is based on. In this world, our tax base is pretty predictable. Once we get into the fiscal year, it's not going to change much. Unfortunately, that predictability has been pretty negative over the past. What this chart shows you basically is I've removed personal property from the chart, because that's kind of going way down just because of tax reform, but we are getting some of that money back. This is real property only, so this is houses and buildings and property and those types of things. And you can see, our peak value was in 2009, at about $220 million for our real property, and we've lost essentially almost $22 million, about 10% of that taxable value of our real property value since 2009, just 10 years. That equates to a reduction of $307,000 in annual property tax revenue. So that amount declined faster than inflation, but it can only grow at the pace of inflation in the future. So the uptick on these charts, generally without new development, is a lot slower than the decline. So that just gives you a picture with the impact of personal property tax reform, that kind of skews the numbers a little bit, but this is real property only. As far as our millages go, again, this is a required part of the public hearing in accordance with the General Property Tax Act. These are our two core millages, the city operating and the police and fire retirement millage. Those are staying the same. They can only be increased through a referendum vote, not by council themselves, because of the headly rollback, so it would have to be a headly override for those to go up. They are levied at their maximum allowable without that step. That will generate almost $3.7 million as a tax levy. In addition to that, properties within the downtown district have a $1.9548 additional levy on those properties, and those monies can only be spent within the district itself, where the properties are levied that millage. Charges for services, primarily, $4 million is water and sewer rates. The council recently approved a 3% rate increase for our water and sewer charges. I think this is a good place to remind you of our comparability, as we talk about our region and how our rates compare to others very favorably. But a 3% increase, the justification for this increase, essentially, we have the final phase of the well field coming up, ongoing capital investment, so that we don't ignore or defer some of this really needed and necessary capital investment for our system to maintain its integrity. And then, again, to maintain that important benchmark, our best practice of three to six months cash on hand. We've been successful in doing that. Any excess cash that comes in beyond what we spend for the year, we'll simply just add to our reserves to help offset the need for future, either rate increases or enables us to pay for some of these projects on a pay-as-you-go basis. The other charge for services, solid waste removal and recycling. We did just approve a four-year extension for our recycling contract, really at the same pricing model that it was before, where it just goes up in accordance with a CPI and a fuel price index, and it just continued that process with no immediate adjustment beyond those indexes. The solid waste contract with Republic is currently pending, the negotiation of extension. That should be before council on May 21st, and we're expecting a moderate increase on that. That increase would still be, for the removal services, essentially below what the next low bid was five years ago, so we feel pretty comfortable that that is still a very competitive rate, especially when you compare it to what non-city residents will pay for their trash services. Again, that's residential only. Here's a summary of the primary sources of intergovernmental revenue and what is going to happen for the current fiscal year. Again, mostly good news on these. Constitutional revenue sharing is expected to tick up a little bit. I did read today that they're going after a little bit the statutory revenue sharing, and so we have partners like the MML that are trying to push for the elimination of that takeaway, I guess we can say, but that's pending. The budget, I expect to receive about $195 from that source this year, so the budget still is a little bit conservative, just not knowing what's going to happen, but at $190, we should be safe. The personal property tax reimbursement, this is part of the reform that was passed. Again, this is, this one is kind of a mystery to us, because we use the state's projections that they provide us, and we've gotten almost double the first two years. And so we don't want to plan for that, because all of the signs kind of point to that not continuing to happen, at least maybe not beyond one more year at the most. I've read a couple of articles about different ideas that the governor has to use that money for other things. So, again, we've taken a conservative approach on that, but even at a conservative approach, that projection is up by 40,000. The reason is more a rolling off that become part of the formula of what you've lost that's eligible for reimbursement, as that is phased in up and through 2022, I believe. And then our street dollars, our Act 51 funds and the major and local street fund are continuing to go up as well as the reality or the implementation of the increased fuel taxes and registration fees are implemented. On the expenditure or spending side, this is the primary categories. It's a little bit busy, but I wanted to provide some context by adding where these were in the prior year. So wages and benefits, as a service organization, no real surprise that primarily our spending revolves around people and salaries and benefits. Other operating costs lumped into here is everything from operating supplies, utilities, any kind of normal cost that you'd have to operate your organization. Capital outlay in construction went down pretty significantly, we talked about that in the prior, in a prior slide. And then just these other, the transfers to other funds, again, that was very significant last year, as we transferred money from various reserves to help fund last year as we transferred money from various reserves to help fund the construction of the market at Cadillac Commons. And so that can be expected as well. Debt service, we eliminated a bond issue in the past or in the prior fiscal year, in the current fiscal year that we're in. And so fiscal year eighteen references the prior year here included a bond issue that will, will now be paid off. So that's why that, the debt service has gone down. Because of accounting differences between governmental funds and proprietary funds or business-type funds, which for us are like the water and sewer fund and the DPW fund, we do appropriate an additional four point four million dollars in capital and six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in, in debt service that, that don't, aren't reflected on the chart above, but are reflected in the, in the, the budget ordinance. On the, just a little more specifics on, on our primary categories of spending, again, total authorized, full-time employment continues at seventy-four. Again, you can see what that's done over the last fifteen years as we've sort of restructured, reorganized, taken advantage of some, some technology and, and a little bit of contract labor to, to help save some money and absorb the, the responsibilities that came from those, you know, eight or so people that have been lost. Two-thirds of that costs are wages, about a third is benefit costs. And then from a COLA perspective for the year, the, the current budget plans for two to two and a half percent, depending on the employee group. We have some, some current CBAs, collective bargaining agreements that are in place that spell out those, those COLAs. The operating costs, this just gives you a little bit more detail of the operating costs and, and what is causing the, the increase. No one item besides some, some employee medical insurance premiums and claims is responsible for, you know, about half of that increase. Again, our, our renewal rate was favorable at about four percent. The, the main part of the increase is just change, change in enrollment. So singles, maybe getting married, a, a single employee that is left being replaced by employee with a family that costs more for insurance. So that's, that's primarily what's causing the increase.
Very manageable increase.
Another significant category is just the capital and construction. I don't want to be duplicative compared to what we just talked about, but these projects are actually in the budget now and not just in a, in a plan. And you can see the list there. Wanted to highlight, the fire pumper is currently in there as well as a related assistance to firefighters grant that would cover ninety-five percent of that. We did receive notification that we were denied again on that portion of the grant. So that project will be deferred again. However, we did have budgeted for the five percent match is, is in the budget, and so we may be back in front of you just recommending kind of a redirect on that. We have some needs with the radios and things in the department that, that we'll probably talk about utilizing what we've already got in the budget. Couple of these may be done in the current year, like the, the wheelchair swing, where we have some good activity going on in that, so. Here's the year one street construction projects again, again, one mile and planning to, to recommend the issuance of some bonds probably late in the fall. Other capital investments that are out there, the well field, here's some steps, I guess, as we get closer to making this a reality. So the steps for fiscal year nineteen, the initial design is, is being worked on right now, and, and then we'll apply for USDA RD rural development, low-interest financing. And then we'll be at the point where we can release the project for bid, hopefully in the fall, late fall. And then we'll award construction contracts. Last time we did three for the different types of services, so that's kind of to be determined. The bad news on that is the initial estimates have increased, and we've been using three and a half million for a long time, really since we built the first one. But there's some differences in the first one with some relocation and the need for some additional facilities and things. And then just, you know, those, that project was in two thousand eleven, and, and the cost of things has gone up pretty dramatically. So we're looking at a project that could cost seventy-eight million dollars according to initial, initial projections. Not bid yet, but that's, that's initial projections. Says we're currently value engineering to try to minimize final costs. That's fancy language to say just we're trying to figure out how to make it cost less without sacrificing quality or, or, you know, a, a good vision for the future of what we need. A plow truck is in here, street sweeper, those were two things that we talked about, and then some IT projects as well. Other budgetary issues, just to mention briefly, the Cadillac Community Center Naval Reserve, that's one that we've, we've brought up for a couple of years that is about nearing the end of its ability to, to sustain itself without some, some investment or some new ideas of a way to, to handle that. So Marcus and I are, are continuing to talk about that. We'll need to, to involve council at some level here in the near future. The, the personal property tax reimbursement, I mentioned it as an issue. So far it's been a positive issue in that we've gotten more funds to be able to use really as one-time infusion of capital to some kind of, of local project. And so that's been a good news thing at this point, but it just is one of those things that, that's out there that, that really isn't very straightforward. So I wanted to mention that as well. Finally, next steps for this, the budget again has been available for public review. It's on the website, pretty easy URL to remember, cadillac-mi.net/fy2019budget. That's a direct link to the document itself. If there are any, if there's anyone interested in reviewing that, there's a copy available to, to look at here at the city clerk's office. Again, happy to provide hard copies by request as well. The city council will consider the budget for adoption. You'll see the introduction of that ordinance tonight. That will be on May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. There's ongoing opportunities as council would desire to have those additional discussions prior to adoption. For the sake of, of the public, put my direct contact information, always happy to, to have a conversation and answer questions about what happens with the money here. And any kinds of changes and adjustments can be made up to the point of that adoption that could impact the final ordinance. And then the budget will take effect July first. So.
Wanted to add a couple of quick things to what just transpired. First, this really capstones the sort of end of the process that Owen and his team have gone through. And so obviously, thank you very much, Owen. We would not be here without all of your hard efforts and, and that of, of your very minimal staff. So it's very much appreciated. The presentation is a part of the public hearing that'll take place at your May meeting really is very minimal aside from just simply introducing the item again. So tonight was, was the staff presentation for this process, and at the public hearing, it'll, it'll really be on the appropriations ordinance, just a, an opportunity for the public to take or to make additional comments, but there won't be another full, another full presentation is what you had tonight, so.
Okay. But being that it is a public hearing this evening, we need to open the floor for any public comments as it relates to this public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and go to the council to see if there's any questions.
Well done.
All done?
Very well done. Thank you, Owen.
Thank you, Owen.
Sorry about the twenty-three minutes.
Let me check that.
I was watching.
Perfect.
You know, it's six-thirty, Ethan, I got them both done. I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
It's almost like one state of the city.
There you go. Not quite yet, but almost.
Give us a few more, about ten more minutes there.
Okay. With that then, it takes us to this evening's community spotlight. And this evening, we have superintendent of schools, Jen Brown, who would like to share some exciting things that are going on in the community.
Thank you. Awesome. I don't know, I should ask, what's my time limit? Please don't anyone keep track. I feel like there's a lot of pressure now. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to spotlight Cadillac area public schools and bring to you some really important information about an upcoming proposal May eighth regarding a school bond proposal. So I'll start with, let's see, about two years ago, two and a half years ago, the public school system underwent a full facility study in order to prioritize our capital projects moving forward. And what we uncovered was about over, over a hundred million dollars worth of facility needs in the next ten years, which we knew was not realistic or responsible. So we paused at that point and engaged the community in about eighteen months' worth of group forums, large group forums, small group forums, one-on-one conversations to redefine how we can better serve our kids and community as a school district. So through that work, we put to the community in November a proposal that would address those facility issues and challenges in a more responsible way by redistricting Cadillac area public schools. Unfortunately, that proposal fell short by forty-five votes. So between November and this time now, we've been talking to a lot of people, receiving a lot of feedback from the community, from voters about what they didn't appreciate in the proposal and what they did appreciate so that we could bring a proposal back that better reflected the desires of our community. What we learned was there were, were too many athletic improvements that were in that proposal in November and the overall cost. So we took some steps necessary to redefine the proposal that's coming before the community in May, actually a few weeks here. So I want to go through that with you and then provide some opportunity to answer any questions that you might have. So I'm going to start with the early childhood center. Those, that's where we really meet our youngest learners is in our preschool programs. Our preschool programs in Cadillac area public school are grant-funded through a state grant, the Great Start Writing Us grant, and tuition that parents pay to us if they don't qualify for the free program. Currently, we have seven preschool classrooms, five of them are grant-funded. We had one at the beginning of the year for tuition-based. We opened another classroom up, say about a month and a half ago, and it was full within a week. There is a real need for early childhood preschool programming in this community. We're proud of the program that we provide, but we are absolutely in need of space. So we opened up that classroom because we had one classroom with the space, but we have classrooms all over the district, which makes it inefficient to run, and we know we can enhance our programming if we had an early childhood building. Fortunately for us, Kenwood Elementary is centrally located, and the original building that was built in the fifties is in good shape. The nineteen seventies new addition, we call that a new addition, is in terrible shape. So our plan is really to demolish that nineteen seventies addition and repurpose those ten original classrooms, doing the infrastructure work with the roof, the plumbing, the electrical, and the heating and cooling system there so that it's prepared to make spaces comfortable for earliest learners. But that way we can also rent space to ISD to do some of the special ed preschool programs as well, keeping that under one house. And we're excited about what that would provide, not only our early learners, but also our families in the community of Cadillac. See, moving into our elementary, we currently have four elementary buildings, Forest View, Lincoln, Franklin, and Kenwood. We would go from four to three elementary buildings. We would do so so that we could move fifth grade back to elementary and create space for kindergarten through fifth grade. We know that fifth grade really belongs to the elementary level, giving our kids one additional year to build a foundation for success that's necessary to build them up for high school. So our elementary buildings would be Franklin, Lincoln, and Forest View. Franklin and Lincoln would see building additions, classroom additions. We have overcrowding challenges at Franklin Elementary currently. We're about a hundred and twenty percent capacity. Our music and art are on a cart. Many of our elementary buildings making space for additional classrooms to keep our class sizes low. So that along with additional flex space, none of our elementaries have cafeterias. We have gymnasiums that we use during lunchtime for cafeteria. So having flex space to have a cafeteria would also allow us to have indoor recess space in northern Michigan, like days like in April. That happened to happen, we can have our kids still be able to get that physical activity that's so essential for their development and the success of their day. So we're, that would also be space we can have music class. So that would be real flexible space. The space that we're adding in this proposal is all flexible space that can be multipurpose. So we're trying to be really responsible for the future. In addition, technology infrastructure will be upgraded. Every building will have one single safe, secure entrance, and we'll get into the safety here in a little bit, but those additional classrooms and renovations to our original buildings will be essential to creating comfortable, safe learning spaces for all of our K-five kids. Moving into the middle school, we're going to create a true middle school concept. Right now, we ask our kids to transition from fifth to sixth, sixth to, or fourth to fifth, sixth to seventh, and then into ninth grade. That's three transitions during middle-level years. I have two middle-level children. That's really challenging for our middle-level kids or going through a lot. So this plan allows us to create a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade true middle-level concept where we're not just providing the academics, but the social, emotional supports that are essential for middle-level learners to be successful. So we're excited about that. Additional classrooms and in flex space, again, a single century, a, a single secure entry. And then we're going to renovate really good space at Mackinac Trail Middle School, which is twenty years old. We have some larger classrooms that we can optimize, kind of like what Owen was talking about value engineering, doing better, more with less. So we're going to put some walls up, take advantage of that space, reduce the overall cost, which would include some technology, infrastruc- infrastructure upgrades, and then some mechanical, septic, and electrical upgrades to support those additional classrooms. And that building also needs a partial roof replacement, so that will be addressed as well. About half of the overall cost is in the Cadillac Junior High High School complex. That is the two hundred and fifty thousand square feet complex. What we're proposing is that we take majority of the junior high school and ren- fully renovate that to meet the needs of high school learners. Right now, that building built in the late fifties was really constructed to support kids learning in desks and rows. Our kids don't learn in desks and rows anymore. They learn a lot by doing, collaborating, working in groups, applying that knowledge. And our teachers are really restricted, environmentally restricted on what they can do with our kids. It's not abnormal that you would go into the junior high and find classes in the lobby because they need the space to actually do the learning that's really beneficial for kids in this twenty-first century. So this building would see a full renovation, a secure entry. We would demolish fourteen classrooms on the back end of the building, the high school building. The current high school offices and cafeteria would serve as central administration. So our central office building, we moved to the high school, allowing us to sell that building and take any proceeds to offset overall costs. We look at expanding some corridors. The roof needs replaced. All of the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing, the infrastructure systems need replacement, windows and doors, some flooring replacement. But really, that building would be fully renovated. The media center would see some renovation, and the auditorium would see seating, lighting, and sound improvements. And that auditorium is used by the community nearly every weekend in most weeknights. Additionally, we would renovate and the technology infrastructure to support one-to-one wireless moving forward. And then again, like I said, optimize that space, move central administration over. The images that are in the slideshow are conceptual. Those are just ideas of which would show the types of spaces that we could bring to our kids if this proposal is, is voted through. Safety and security is a, the number one priority of our school district, and in this proposal, we will see significant safety, security upgrades. Like I said, right now, our buildings, we have ten buildings. In our high school, we have an open campus because we can't house cafeteria, lunches in our, the size of our cafeteria. So our kids can come and go for AMCTC Career Tech Center, PM Career Tech Center, first lunch, second lunch, third lunch. So at five different times during this school day, our, our high school kids could come and go. So it's nearly impossible to keep that building safe and secure and know who's in and out at what time. So having a single secure entry separate for parents and students is essential in, in being able to do that. So that is in this proposal, every building. Security cameras will be added and updated so that law enforcement will have twenty-four hour access, virtual access to our buildings. Classroom door security, indoor and outdoor PA systems. This doesn't seem like it's necessary, but when we have kids out on recess, at any given time, we need to get those kids back in or be able to coordinate an emergency event. We have to be able to communicate indoors and outdoors. New and updated fire alarm systems, ADA accessibility at all sites. We are not compliant with ADA since our buildings were built in the fifties. Average age of our building, sixty-five years old. Mackinac Trail, Lincoln are twenty years old, they are, have more ADA accessibility. Additionally, we're looking to separate our transportation loops from our parent and student drop-off from our bus loops. If you've been to an elementary building or even the high school and junior high building, it drop-off or pickup, it. building, it drop-off or pickup, it is very difficult, and it's a safety hazard to have the buses looping through where kids are running back and forth to meet their parents. So, separating those would be a safety enhancement as well. And then, parking lot lighting. We just, we would like to think we're through our winter months, even though it doesn't feel like it. Often, our student drop-offs are in the dark, and without parking lot lighting, they are getting off the bus in dark parking lots, which is, again, a safety concern. So, the big changes from November, like I said, and Owen had talked about this engineering, we brought on a new architect who could take a look at this plan and find a way to accomplish those things that the community said were priorities, like safety and infrastructure, and without compromising the plan but lowering the cost. And in doing so, we had a couple of really innovative changes. So, the high school cafeteria is a big concern for us, safety concern. So, the original plan in November was to make the junior high gym a cafeteria, which would be large enough for us to close campus. But that would require us to expand the auxiliary gym, which was an athletic improvement. So, what the architect did was by widening the one hallway between the junior high and high school, that's an awkward, narrow hallway, we would be able to capitalize on the space in the lobby, which is underutilized, and the current junior high cafeteria to have enough space to close campus, leave the gym the gym, and we don't need to expand a gym. That, and then, we took off the major athletic components, which was the track, and the auxiliary gymnasium, which allowed us to reduce the overall cost by three-and-a-half million dollars. So, we're excited that we didn't have to compromise any of our safety initiatives or our classroom enhancements, but we were able to lower the overall cost and reduce the athletic, major athletic improvements, which is what we heard from the community. So, we're excited about that. The potential operational savings of this proposal is reducing four buildings. McKinley Elementary, which has been closed, Central Office, Cooley and Cooley Annex will be sold. Those dollars we put back into capital improvements. Reduction utility costs. Our buildings built in the fifties, sixty-five years old, you can imagine are not efficient. We will reduce the overall thirty thousand square feet, optimize our transportation routes, be able to optimize staffing and programming, going to three elementaries, K-five. Can imagine the additional programs and supports. We have counselors in every building instead of shared time. That's, again, another enhancement for our kids, and then also balance class sizes. I guess I'll leave some time for some questions, but I want to make clear that this really just is not a bricks-and-mortar plan. As you can tell, it's not just addressing the facility needs of our district, but it truly enhances the learning opportunities for our kids. Reducing transitions, creating spaces that are twenty-first century, where our kids can compete for jobs, scholarships, and opportunities when they leave us, and also providing that pre-K through twelfth grade excellence in education. Right now, our kids have lots of programs and opportunities to go to career tech. They have early college opportunities. We're really proud of our achievements, not just in our academics, but our fine arts, and we're committed to that whole child and community school feel. So, we believe this proposal best reflects that community school feel, accomplishes safety and efficiency, and also sets us up for the next fifty years. Can I entertain any questions you might have?
Well, it was a wonderful presentation.
How much, what was my time?
I didn't even time you.
Oh, wow. Sorry, Owen.
I was still taken by the presentation.
Just the first one.
No, no. We really appreciate you taking the opportunity to come and share that with us this evening, and I'm hoping for all the best outcomes.
Well, thank you. Thank you. If people are interested and they have questions, I know this is televised, we're really just making sure that people have the information to make an informed vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions, meet with anybody. We have a tax calculator on our website. Call me, you don't have to tell me your name. I can walk you through that. I'll be happy to sit down with you. We just want to make sure that people understand, May eighth, this is an important proposal for not only the schools but our community, and we want to make sure people have the information at their hands to make an informed vote. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have some communications this evening.
Yes, the first request is to approve the parade route for the Memorial Day Parade to be held on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, at ten a.m., with parades set up beginning at nine a.m.
And that looks to be the same that it's always been.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the parade route for the Memorial Day Parade on May twenty-eighth at ten a.m. with the parade setup beginning at nine.
Second.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is for the closure of Linden Street between Chestnut and West Division from eight a.m. to eight-thirty a.m. on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, for the Cadillac Rotary Strive for Strive Memorial Day five-k event.
Make a motion to approve the request from the Rotary Club for the Rotary Strive for Strive race.
Support.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens? Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from eight a.m. to ten-thirty a.m. on June second, two thousand and eighteen, for the Life Resources Walk for Life event. And I do believe we have somebody here.
Thank you, Sandy. Yes, Bridgette Roberts with Life Resources in Northern Michigan, and I just wanted to be able to say thank you face-to-face to you guys for all that you do. And Life Resources says thank you for allowing us opportunities like having walks and having a street shut down for a time, as inconvenient as that is. You guys make all of that easy and safe for people. And so, that's one of our biggest fundraisers, and so, I just wanted, Life Resources, to one-time say, hey, thank you. Thanks for all that you guys do.
Thank you.
I have a question about this one. Is this the first time they've requested a street closure?
No. No, it's the same as it's typically been for a number of years.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from eight a.m. to ten-thirty a.m. on June second for the Life Resources Walk for Life event.
I'll support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next request is to approve the Maiden Michigan Artisan and Farm Market to operate from ten a.m. to four p.m. on Thursdays and Saturdays from June second to October thirteen, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion to approve the request from the Maiden Michigan Market as presented.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next item is the item that was added at the beginning of the meeting, and it's a request to approve to place for Oasis to place teal-colored tires at four locations within the Cadillac Parks, subject to the conditions noted on the council communication that was presented.
Is there somebody here from that?
I don't believe so. No? It's the same thing they did last year.
Right. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the request, excuse me, from Oasis to place teal-colored tires at four locations within the Cadillac Parks, subject to conditions noted.
Support. Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries. And that takes us to the city manager's report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The first item is with respect to the Kenwood Bath House. The city received eight bids for the project, and in accordance with our local preference purchasing section of code, we are recommending this evening that the contract go to Orshol Construction in the amount of one-hundred-seventy-four-thousand-four-hundred-eighty dollars. I do have to just inquire with finance really quick, because that amount is different in the matrix than it is in the recommendation.
Right. Because he has to match the low, which he has agreed to do.
Thank you.
We have a letter from Orshol saying they have agreed to match the low.
And so, the low is one-seventy-three-five-hundred. In addition to that recommendation, we are requesting a five percent contingency be added to the total request, which brings the amount to one-eighty-two-one-seventy-five. Also, as an aside, the city was successful in getting an eighty-thousand-dollar Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant that'll help offset the construction costs.
Motion to award the contract for the construction of a new bath house to Orshol Construction in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-five-hundred dollars and approve a five percent contingency for possible changes in construction quantities or scope for a total award of
Support.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This next item is with respect to the Selma Street Improvements and Sanitary Lift Station project. And before I go over the bids, while we just approved a five percent contingency for the last project, in this one, given the complexities of the project itself, we're asking for a fifteen percent contingency. Three bids were received. The recommendation this evening is to the lowest bidder from CJ's Excavating out of Cadillac, Michigan, in the amount of six-hundred-one-thousand-eight-hundred-thirty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents, with the fifteen percent contingency that brings it to six-hundred-ninety-two-thousand-one-hundred-ten dollars and ten cents.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for the Selma Street Improvements and Sanitary Lift Station to CJ Excavating, Inc., in the amount of six-hundred-one-thousand-eight-hundred-thirty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents, and approve a fifteen percent contingency for city engineer-approved field changes for a total award of six-hundred-ninety-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten dollars and ten cents.
Pretty specific.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next item is with respect to alley concrete paving. This is an item that was brought forward by neighbors. They approved the special assessment for this project. Of the bids received, the lowest bid for the project came in from Sheppers Concrete Construction LLC out of Grand Rapids at an amount of twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-eighty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. And this project will be spread out between the seven different property owners and repaid over a ten-year period of time to the city. The recommendation this evening would be to award it to Sheppers, including a ten percent contingency in the amount of thirty-thousand-three-hundred-forty-two dollars and ninety-three cents in total.
So, it looks like this came in at higher than what we estimated?
Slightly.
And...
By about three thousand dollars and change.
Are the property owners still okay with us moving forward?
We were going to do a couple of things to, just to add that. We were, it's actually when we provided the property owners an estimate, when they came in and requested the alley project, we provided them with eighteen thousand dollars. And so, the plan is, at this point, to kind of withhold the notice to proceed to the contractor until we've circled back with the property owners to make sure that they're okay with the increase in the amount. Basically, it's going to take their assessment from, and increase it by fifty percent. So, you know, from like twenty-five-hundred to thirty-nine-hundred or something like that. So, we need to make sure they're okay with that. Part of the costs are costs that are probably ours to bear a little bit as far as some newer sidewalk approaches and things because of some, potentially some grade changes and just some things that need to be replaced. So, that would help minimize some of that overage. But primarily, it's going to be costs borne by these property owners, and we need to make sure they're still okay with it. But we'll do that after the award.
Well, thanks for the explanation. I really hope we can make this work. I know they really want it.
It was a good question.
Yeah.
So, if they don't, after we approve this, if they're not good with it, will it just...
We just cancel it.
Okay. All right. Who wants to do this one? Anybody else? All right. I'll make a motion to award the contract for the alley concrete paving to Sheppers Concrete Construction LLC in the amount of twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-eighty-four dollars and forty-eight cents, and approve a ten percent contingency for city engineer-approved field changes in unit quantity or scope for a total award of thirty-thousand-three-hundred-forty-two dollars and ninety-three cents.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Several years ago, we updated one of our operating policies to require City Council approval or ratification of city manager's recommendation regarding out-of-state travel. And this evening, we have three requests that we've bundled into one. The first is regarding the North American Snow Conference, where we'd like to send our Department of Public Works Operations Manager to. It's taking place in May in Indianapolis. The second is regarding a Monroe truck equipment and federal sign factory tour. This is one, in fact, where the two vendors actually cover the costs of the trip regarding travel and accommodations. We would like to send our, again, Public Works Operations Manager, as well as one of our operators, to that. And then, the third is regarding my attendance at the annual conference of the International City Managers, City County Management Association, ICMA. This is an annual conference, an international conference, that I think I've only attended once since I've been here, and frankly, it's typically because the dates always seem to be right around the same time as the annual Michigan Municipal League Conference. In fact, in attending this one, I would be leaving, I think, the day after or the last day of the MML convention as well. But it is something that I really should be more regularly participating in, and at this one, in particular, I'll be getting a twenty-year service award. So, hoping to be able to make that.
Where's the Monroe truck equipment place?
I do not know. Do you?
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin? Okay. Monroe, Wisconsin, probably. Or maybe not. There is a Monroe, Wisconsin, so...
Well, you would know that. Make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
I think it's a good idea for you, I'm sorry, I think it's a good idea for you to go to a national conference routinely.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the next thing on the agenda is introduction of resolution.
So, the very next item is a request to set the public hearing for May twenty-first. This would be, again, a part of your regular council meeting. That would be a public hearing that will establish the general appropriations, excuse me, per the General Appropriations Act. Sorry, I'm stumbling, regarding our fiscal year 2019, general appropriation.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance establishing General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2019, and set a public hearing for May twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
Support.
Thank you for getting that up.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
We have a few items, Mayor, and members of the City Council, under adoption of ordinances and resolutions. The first item this evening is a request to adopt a resolution authorizing the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality Brownfield Grant slash Loan Application for Cadillac Lofts Redevelopment. We do have some people this evening I'd like to introduce to the City Council. The first group of people I would like to make a formal introduction to or of is Cadillac Lofts. With that, Eric and Dean, if you guys wouldn't mind just coming quickly to the podium, that would be great. Eric Hannah is the CEO of Michigan Community Capital, and if you could just take just a minute to provide a high overview of what Cadillac Lofts LLC is trying to accomplish, I think that would be great, and perhaps introduce your development team.
Sure. So many of you know Dean, he's a pillar of the community, we're very lucky to have him on the team.
I paid him to say that.
I think it goes the other way.
My name's Eric Hannah, and I run a company called Michigan Community Capital, which is a 501(c)(3) public charity. It has been in business since 2005 and has completed almost $200 million worth of urban and rural redevelopment projects using a variety of state, federal, and private sector tools. And this project, we hope, will completely redevelop the former Olson site, which is not far from here, a couple of blocks, where your clock tower sits. The plan, as it currently stands, is for a number in excess of 50 apartment units, as well as almost 13,000 square feet of retail. And obviously, it's going to take some time to get that done and a lot of cooperation, and we're very excited to start that process. Some of our supporters include the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, a variety of banks fulfilling their Community Reinvestment Act obligations, and some philanthropic sources, as well as the DEQ, which is also very helpful. And we are in the very early stages of this process and starting some of these longer lead time items, this being one of them, and we're really excited about the projects. One of the larger projects that we've done without tax credits, and so we hope it goes better than the last concrete bid we just heard about. That was pretty depressing considering how much concrete we're planning to buy.
Yes, I guess I would just add to that, we are very excited and grateful to be part of this project. It's been great to get to know Eric and his commitment to communities. He understands that we are really trying to bring housing to this community. That means that his return, or the return of his company, is going to be much less than a typical developer would receive. So we're excited about this. We are, as he alluded to, hoping that we can get pricing in at a reasonable level. We are trying to meet our budget, and the process right now of getting some of those. But we are very excited about the opportunity to add housing to the Cadillac community for young professionals, for a lot of people that have a housing need currently. We also know that this project will have a very positive impact on downtown pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic. Anytime we can bring more people downtown to obviously live, but also to eat, to shop, it's very good, and we think this will be very good for Cadillac, so. That's us.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could introduce Mac McCollin. Mac McCollin is with Otwell-Moby, and Mac is our Brownfield consultant, and he is here this evening to help us with this item, as well as to be around if there are any questions regarding the setting of a couple of public hearings for other items later on your agenda. Mac, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and perhaps just sharing some of the highlights that are in the council's packet. In your packet, you have a very lengthy communication. Mac, if you could perhaps provide again some of those highlights.
Absolutely. My two-hour presentation?
Yes. Starting now.
Three minutes. Just quickly, as included in your packet, as part of this project, we've been working with the DEQ, and there's some great opportunities, a closed window, as a matter of fact, in this particular case, to get grants and loans to take care of environmental response activities, lead in asbestos abatement and demolition on the site. We were one of about 15 projects, there was $17 million in request, and they had about $1.5 million. So we were able to get a substantial portion of that allocation for this project. We've been approved for a $223,000 grant and a $543,000 loan in this project. For the loan terms are very favorable, there's no interest or principal for five years, and then for the 10-year payments afterwards, the interest rate is between a percentage of 1.5 and 2%. So very attractive. We are looking to prepare a Brownfield plan for this project, so the increased tax revenues in the project will be able to repay this loan as well, so we'll have a source of funds for that. As part of the application process, the DEQ requires a resolution from the governing body, the Brownfield Authority is the actual applicant, but it does require a resolution from the council that says that you'll undertake the project if awarded, that it's consistent with local development plans and zoning ordinances, and it also has to say that the Cadillac Brownfield Authority will accept a loan in this amount. And very importantly for you is that the city, they're asking the City Council to pass a resolution which commits to repay the loan. So I wanted to be clear, and that's one of the obligations for that.
Mac, could you maybe explain how that's been par for the course with this community, as with others in these projects?
Yes, that was also done for the Dollar General project and the Harris Milling project, the Chemical Bank project. So both of those received Brownfield loans for that. And I'm not sure if Eric has children, but we are getting his firstborn secured for this project as well. But no, there'll be, there'll be a development agreement where the developers are essentially committed to repay that loan and sort of pass that off to them. Where also, they're not going to be moving forward unless they're very certain of whether the project is going to happen and all the financing is in place, so we're very confident that there'll be dollars available to do that. We're working through all of the numbers for that as well.
I think, Mac and City Council members, as Eric commented during his introduction, you know, this is a long lead type of item, meaning we need to start it now, get this application on file, get these grant dollars and loan dollars secured, so that when everything does come together for the project, we don't necessarily run the risk of losing out on what is a really incredible opportunity through the MDEQ.
Eppert, Nancy, questions?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the MDEQ Brownfield Grant slash Loan Application for Cadillac Lofts Redevelopment.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The next two items, we had one communication in the public packet that covered both. Both of these items are requests to set a public hearing regarding the combined Brownfield plan for both the 412, excuse me, for the Raven redevelopment project and for the Cadillac Ace Hardware redevelopment project. The public hearings will be on May 21. We are going to ask that you take these one by one. At that meeting, we'll have the resolution, as well as the copious amounts of information about the plan itself. We just don't have that available yet tonight. But all we're doing is setting the public hearing, so.
Motion to adopt the resolution for combined Brownfield plan for the Raven redevelopment, and to set a public hearing for May 21, 2018.
Support. Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
In relation to this second one, I will need a motion again to recuse myself.
I'll make a motion that Councilmember King be recused from this item.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
And then a second request, making a motion to adopt, or do we have to, are we giving info on that first, or that's?
Nope. We're all set up.
A motion to adopt the resolution for combined Brownfield plan for the Cadillac Ace Hardware redevelopment and set the public hearing for May 21.
Support.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
And that takes us to our second public comment for this evening, if anyone is interested. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order. Does anyone have anything this evening?
Just a quick reminder that our next regularly scheduled public City Council meeting is on May 21.
And that's because of the Memorial Day?
No, the special election.
The election? Oh, that. Sorry, Tim. Okay, thank you, Marcus. All right, and this evening, we do have to move into closed session.
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Wexford County Circuit Court Consolidated Case Numbers 13-24803-CH and 17-27610CZ, Terry D. LLC at all versus Clam Lake Township and Herring Charter Township versus City of Cadillac and Hop Family LLC and City of Cadillac versus Herring Township, Charter Township, and Clam Lake Township. I'll support that.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.